Oh, we're ready to get started. I've always wanted to use one of these, so.
Should I pick it up?
Sure. Good afternoon, everyone. It's my honor to serve as Vice Chair of the WMU Board of Trustees. This post provides me the opportunity to assist with facilitating the meeting when Chair Edgerton is unable to attend in person. Thank you for engaging with us for this February 6th annual meeting where we convened to address areas of key business matters, uphold our responsibilities as a fiduciary board, and set the course for the year ahead. Throughout today's agenda, we will hear about WMU's recent achievements and campus developments, as well as celebrate outstanding students, faculty, and staff who continue to advance the mission of Western Michigan University. I appreciate each of you for the taking the time to join us, whether in person or via livestream. With that, let's begin. Secretary Schuman, do we have a quorum?
We do have a quorum. Vice Chair Turfee, we have Chair Edgerton online.
Thank you, Chair Edgerton, and thank you, Secretary Schuman. And is the livestream operational?
Vice Chair Turfee, we're good to go.
At this time, I would like to call on the Board for a motion to accept today's agenda. I will entertain a motion at this time.
Sir, moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Are there any comments from our trustees concerning our December 12th, 2024 meeting minutes? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion for approval.
Move to approve the minutes?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. As I mentioned, it's an honor to be here today presiding over the meeting as Chair Edgerton and Chair Edgerton is with us today via livestream. I'd like to first congratulate Trustee Kelly Burris and Trustee James Liggins Jr., who both were reappointed by Governor Whitmer to this Board for eight-year terms. We are excited for you to continue making valuable contributions to enhance Western Michigan University. Trustees Burris and Liggins were first appointed to vacancies on the Board for terms ending this past December. Trustee Burris joined us in February 2023, and Trustee Liggins was appointed in January of 2024. Serving on this Board is both a great responsibility and an extraordinary privilege. As fiduciary stewards of the university, we advocate for Western, and it's our honor to play a vital role in upholding WMU's reputation by supporting and safeguarding its mission. The decisions we make at this table impact every facet of the university. One of our most significant responsibilities in selecting is selecting a university president. As many of you know, we are in the process for searching for the 10th leader of Western Michigan University who we will pick, who will pick up the mantle that our stellar president to my left, President Montgomery, has established and retires later this year. It's an honor to serve on your team, sir. Trustees Liggins and Wood are co-chairs of the Presidential Search Advisory Committee, also known as PSAC, a group made up of students, faculty, staff, and community members. We are committed to a thorough, thoughtful, and inclusive search process that ensures we select a leader who will uphold Western Michigan's Michigan, mission, providing a holistic experience-driven education to advance our strategic priorities and inspire not only our students, but our entire campus community. In a recent update to campus, Trustee Liggins and Wood shared that we were closing in on the end of the recruitment phase of the search. Starting later this month through the end of March, PSAC will begin engaging a diversified pool of candidates, evaluating their credentials, and conducting interviews. Their efforts will culminate in recommending a group of finalists to the Board of Trustees for consideration. The committee's goal is to conclude its work later this spring. We extend our gratitude to Trustees Liggins, Wood, and the Advisory Committee for the dedication to helping us identify the next president of WMU. Would you please join me in a round of applause for this group and the efforts they're putting forth? Thank you. Speaking of major developments, as we turn our attention to today's action items, one of the most exciting initiatives on the horizon is the university's latest campus master plan. The Board is pleased to see the collaboration that has taken place as we cast the vision for the future on Western Michigan's infrastructure. Over the past year, I've, I know the Western campus community has worked to shape a comprehensive forward-thinking plan to align with the university's abiding mission and the 2022 to 32 strategic plan. For the Board's consideration, we will hear from Jan Vander Clay, Vice President of Business and Finance, who will share an overview of the 2025 master plan and beyond. In addition to the campus master plan, we will also hear from Vice President Vander Clay with a request for the Board to authorize 2025 general revenue bonds, which includes proceeds to help fund a major housing facility that will replace Valley III, a residence hall for first-year students. The university administration first announced this project slated to be completed for the fall of 2026, just over a year ago, so we look forward to hearing more about this initiative later in the meeting. As I mentioned earlier, today is our annual meeting during which we will elect the Board's officers for the year. Those recommendations are Shelley Edgerton, Chair, myself, Alan Turfee, as Vice Chair, Dr. Kaler Schuman as Secretary, Jan Vander Clay as Treasurer and Assistant Secretary, and Colleen Scharf as Assistant Treasurer. Their continued service on this Board helps us build our progress and strengthen our campus priorities moving forward. Thank you all for your service. We look forward to addressing this agenda item shortly in the meeting. Also during today's annual meeting, Dr. Schuman will lead us through consideration, the transfer delegation, to the, to awarding the degrees. Then President Montgomery will present the Faculty Senate's Constitution amendments, and we will consider approval for the slate of consent items. Now, it's my pleasure to introduce my good friend, President Edward Montgomery, to share some remarks. Mr. President, the mic is yours.
Thank you, Vice Chair Turfee. I really appreciate that. So, good afternoon, and welcome, everybody, to today's meeting. Let me start off with welcoming Dr. Chris Cheatham to today's meeting, our interim Provost and Vice President for Academic Affairs. Welcome, Chris. Thank you for being willing to serve. We're just a month into the spring semester, and the campus community is already earning some really outstanding accolades in our academic rankings and achievements, and so I wanted to take a few minutes to recognize some of those, as well as to give some recognitions to individual faculty, staff, and alumni who are making a global impact out here. For the second time, Time Magazine has published a ranking of the top colleges and universities for producing future leaders. We were on that inaugural list. There were lots of people who were not on the inaugural list. They lobbied and decided that they wanted to push Time Magazine to expand the list, but Time Magazine then looked at it and looked at their criteria, and guess what? We made it again. And so, for the second time in a row, we're in the top 125 of all colleges and universities in the country. Again, when I say 125, there are over 3,000 colleges and universities in the country, so that when we get mentioned, that is really a badge of distinction for what we, our students have been able to do, our alums have been able to do, going on to a variety of different fields and getting recognized in it. As part of the rankings, they also singled out the Hayworth College of Business as one of the leading producers of future talent, and so kudos to both the alums who've done great work, the Business School, and other parts of the campus who also contribute great leaders to our country. But it tells you something about the quality of education we're putting on here and the experiences that we give them and their impact on our, on our students. The students that they're citing are alums, but we're continuing. You just look at some of the, the recent graduates, and they're already knocking it out of the ballpark. Brash, who just accepted a management role in the Heinz, Kraft Heinz Company, a master student, Chance Hoot, who's going to be a faculty member at MSU in Tuba, Emily Bosak, who's already applying her knowledge in nursing and Spanish to a position in the emergency room at Bronson Health. These are just a couple of examples of students who continue, even as they leave school, to not only get jobs, but also become future leaders in their, in their fields. And so, again, it wouldn't have happened without the faculty. It wouldn't happen without the community coming together and making these things possible, but we should take great pride in what our alums are doing. But not only Time Magazine and Future Leaders were recognizing us, Study International, which looked at aviation industry around the world. So, this is a world ranking, not just a national ranking, and they decided to look at where are the best six, six out of the world now, not six out of the United States, six out of the world programs, so you should go to become an aviator, a future pilot. And we're one of those six institutions. Of the two in the United States, we're one of those two. And so, I really want to give hats off to Ray Thompson, his whole team out in the College of Aviation for doing a great job. They cited the opportunities that the faculty have put together with various different airlines, our partnership with Cyrus, Duncan Aviation, Express Jet, and others. Again, if you're getting in a plane these days, you're likely to find a Bronco, and that should make you all feel very comfortable about what we're doing, and, and to be recognized as one of the, the top six in the world is, is really kind of remarkable. So, hats off to them for that. As we go through, I think Vice Chair Turfee had already mentioned that one of the agenda items today will be the campus master plan. Before we do that, I want to take a moment to acknowledge and, and thank people for their efforts in putting together this extensive plan. There was a broad team of people from across campus who served on the advisory team, who served on, as part of facilities management. There were outside consultants, inside consultants. There were people who attended multiple different forums. So, campus community, students, faculty, staff, all participated. So, I thank them for all of the effort and the time they put into helping us set our, our course for our, our future with regard to space and conditions on, on, on the campus. The master plan effort was led in particular by Sarah Van Der Veen, Senior Director of Planning and Design and Construction, and Dave Dakin, Director of Planning, Space Management, and Capital Projects, as well as Anan Sankey, Manager for Capital Renewal and Planning and, and their advisory team. Could we give them a round of applause? I'd like to thank the faculty and staff who attended our first Onward for the Brown and Gold series in January. We had a very good conversation around, that came out of the Employee Engagement Survey about how the campus is operating, talking about the Empowering Futures gift and how it's impacting all kinds of different areas on the campus and helping us advance student success. So, thank those who, who came out and attended that, that session. Other things that are leaving new and powerful experiences on campus and our, our recent announcement from the U.S. Space Force of an award of $35 million to go to nine different universities, including WMU, to assist in creating Space Power and Propulsion for Agility, responsiveness, and resiliency Institute, also known as SPAR Institute, it will provide novel power and propulsion technologies. This work and research has been, going to be completed by WMU students, and will be an essential part of the SPAR Institute. If you think about whose part of this grant, not only is WMU, but, you know, we're pulling along some other people who may not be as good, like University of Michigan, Cornell, Princeton, Penn State are also part of that team. So, you know, we gotta help out our neighbors, right, every once in a while? But again, that tells you about the incredible quality of the kind of work that our faculty are doing, our students are doing, and our ability to, to partner with some of the leading universities in the country. And so, I want to say thank you to Dr. Christina Limmer, Professor Mechanical and Aerospace Engineering, who's our lead on the project for her work in showcasing WMU's academic and research expertise. Also excited to note some great work over at the College of Fine Arts. The WMU University Corral has been invited by the Manhattan Concert Productions President to perform at Carnegie Hall this summer. Now, Carnegie Hall is known for presenting exceptional music performances, and it's rare for a university corral to be invited to perform. In addition, typically, when you do get invited to perform, it comes with a little price tag. You gotta pay to come. But after hearing our corral, the production president, who's in charge of Carnegie Hall, Dr. Craig Arnold, extended an invitation for us to perform for free. Dr. Amanda Quist, Professor, Associate Professor, and Dr. Tim Brent, Instructor in the Gilmore School of Music, will conduct us during that, that concert featuring our corral. And really, to be invited under these conditions to the premier place to perform, one of the premier places to perform is an incredible recognition of the quality of their work and the quality of the students that we have on the College of Fine Arts. So, how about a round of applause? Want to make sure I, I announce a few faculty highlights. First, Dr. Lucie K. Mukongo, Associate Professor in the School of Communications, was being awarded a prestigious Carnegie African Diaspora Fellowship. This summer, Dr. Mukongo will collaborate with faculty at Host University in the University of Kenya to enhance curriculum and review ongoing programs. She will spearhead the development of new undergraduate and graduate degree programs in communication. In addition, her work will explore the integration of artificial intelligence and communications and media studies curriculum, an inspiring set of research, and congratulations. Getting a Carnegie Fellowship is a big deal, so congratulations, Dr. Mukongo. We also have a couple, several other faculty who got Fulbright U.S. Scholar Awards. First, Dr. Stephen Covell, Professor of World Religions and Cultures, will be teaching in Japan, and Dr. Shen Ju Gu, Professor of Sociology, will travel to the University of Vienna in Austria. Additionally, Dr. Casey Chen, Professor of Business Informatic Systems and Director of the Center for Business Analytics, received his third Fulbright Specialist Award for his work on artificial intelligence, and will be at Normandy Business School. And Dr. Jennifer Harrison, Professor of the School of Social Work, got a Fulbright Specialist Program Award, and she will be doing her work in the Slovak Republic. So, congratulations to all of those Fulbright winners, and we look forward to seeing the results of their work. But we're not done congratulating faculty who've done amazing things. Just recently, Dr. Grace Tiffany, Professor in the Department of English, received an incredibly outstanding review from the New York Times for her forthcoming novel, All as a Baker Daughter, as the Baker's Daughter. The New York Times lists her books as one of only four stellar new releases entitled Historical Fiction Imbued with a Rich Sense of Place. So, congratulations to her. In addition to the, the New York rate of work, we have two incredible Broncos who are traveling this week to the New York Fashion Show. One for the Bronco Spirit in Motion Competition that they won, Genesi Fernandez and Ansley Rom. One's a, Genesi is a fashion design and development student. Ashley is a supply chain management student. They're going to be participating in Fashion Week, and so we look forward to their participation, and I'm sure that'll be a memorable experience. Additionally, lastly, I want to make sure that everybody's aware that today is Merz Tate Day. We're fortunate to have a college that bears the name of Merz Tate. She was, Merz Tate was the first African-American woman to receive a bachelor's degree from Western Michigan University. She then went on to get a PhD from that place called Harvard or whatever it was like that. But, but, and truly embodies the spirit of So That All May Learn, and so we welcome her, we welcome having this college that honors her memory and her legacy of scholarship and engagement. And so, I'm excited that Dean Luchera Wallace, Lushara Wallace and her team at Merz Tate will encourage you to join us at 3:30 today in Ellsworth Hall as they dedicate a new Dean Suite and Student Creative Art exhibit. With that, I'll turn it back to you, Vice Chair Turfee.
Thank you, President Montgomery. My mic was off. Thank you, President Montgomery. I now welcome to the podium representatives from the Faculty Senate and Western Student Association and the Graduate Student Association, our shared governance partners. These organizations work with trustees to advance the work of our university with a shared vision to enhance Western's reputation for excellence. I appreciate them being here this afternoon. We look forward to hearing your reports. At this time, I'd like to introduce Dr. Amy Nagle, Faculty Senate President.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Vice Chair Turfee, members of the Board, President Montgomery, colleagues, and guests. On behalf of the Western Michigan University Faculty Senate, I want to thank you for the opportunity to address the Board and update you on your, on our activities. First, the Faculty Senate recently passed several amendments to its constitution and bylaws, which are before you today for approval. The councils and committees of the Faculty Senate have been working on their charges for the year, and I'd like to present a summary of those activities to date. The Essential Studies Committee finalized a WMU Essential Studies Best Practices Guide, which has been approved by the Faculty Senate Executive Board and can be found on the Senate website. Work of this committee and others continues on the fourth-year review of the WMU Essential Studies Program, and results are expected before the end of this, this semester. Members of the Undergraduate Studies Council and the Executive Board met with Academic Affairs staff and the Vice President for Marketing and Strategic Communications regarding creation of a definition for experiential learning at WMU. The Professional Concerns Committee is currently reviewing policies related to hardship withdrawals and the criteria for reinstatement following a withdrawal. The Campus Planning and Finance Council is focusing on reviewing the campus master plan, advancing the Strategic Resource Management Budget Model Discussion, and exploring the establishment of a Sustainability Committee. And finally, the Academic and Information Technology Council supports the Office of Information Technology and its need for returning classroom technology support to the pre-2020 capacity up from the current two-person team. That's all for my comments, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have. And if none, thank you, Vice Chair Turfee, for allowing me to address all of you today.
Thank you, Dr. Nagle. From the Western Student Association, one of the great honors I have is working with President Alex Kasperzek.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Vice Chair Turfee, President Montgomery, the rest of the Board, and everyone in attendance. I would like to, of course, begin by showing my appreciation for allowing me to speak on behalf of the student body. It is bittersweet to say that these are my last full remarks officially as student body president, and next time we see each other, my successor will be introduced and given the chance to split the time with me. It's really quick, it's crazy how quickly time flies, and this journey has been quite wonderful. Speaking of my successor, the student body elections are in full swing. There are two slates going up against each other, and we have three additional ballot items for students to vote on. Our constitution is also up for review, the Campus Activities Board concert selection, and the Affordable Learning Act. The polls open February 19th and close February 28th. I wish all that are running and those that have ballot items good luck, and I'm excited to see where this election takes us. Spring semester is the busiest for WSA. Dinner with Delegates will be hosted on February 17th and offers our students an opportunity to collect, to connect with our local elected officials. We are excited to host Mental Health Week, March 10th through 14th, as well as Green Week and DEI Week towards the end of March and start of April. WSA is also excited to see and help with International Bazaar hosted by the International Student Council on March 29th. We also just keep breaking records at our legislative meetings, and our meetings hit well over 170, 170 attendees each time. In January, we allocated just a little under $100,000 to different RSOs, bringing our academic year total to $350,000. Our home fund has also been utilized and will continue to be for Mental Health Week and International Bazaar. The last couple months of my presidency will be focused on the future, the future of our university and the future of the Western Student Association. I'm determined to transition the new WSA administration in a way that prepares them for the regular, everyday routine of serving the student body. However, I also want to prepare them for the uncertainties. It seems as though higher education and higher, and education in general is under attack in our country. Our federal government has also shown that they will attack our own human nature of being different from one another. The uncertainty and shock that stems from every executive order may be the new normal in our lives, and the next WMU and WSA administration must be prepared for this. There are students terrified that ICE may force their way through campus. There are students terrified that they may lose their fast-for-money grants and other government assistant opportunities. And there are students terrified that they will lose their rights, they'll lose their right to express themselves in the way that they deserve. And so, I ask all of you, what am I supposed to say when I have a student telling me that they can no longer afford college without grants and have to drop out? What am I supposed to do when myself and my fellow sisters are one day unable to gain access to life-saving healthcare? And what am I supposed to say to international students that are scared of this federal administration and are wondering what will happen to them? And so, I call upon the Board, Administration, staff, and faculty to be the people that we look to for support, for answers, for guidance and leadership. We all can and should be champions of education and champions of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Our actions in the coming months and the next four years will not only be felt by WMU students, but students all over the country with the same concerns and fears. Thank you. Onward for the Brown and Gold, and I'll take any questions.
As always, awesome job, Alex. And finally, from our Graduate Students Association, please welcome President Jocelyn Mahdina.
Good afternoon to everyone, the Board, President Montgomery, and everyone else seated over here. I also want to apologize. I sound like a boy. I just have the flu, I promise. Just a couple updates on behalf of GSA. First off, I just want to be thankful, as always, that I can, I'm able to speak on behalf of them. For really exciting things, GSA would like to invite everyone in this room to 3MT, which is a three-minute thesis competition that we have every year in conjunction with the Grad College. It's going to be hosted, actually, right in this room where you're at, February 18th from 2:00 to 4:00. So, please come in. We'll have snacks. It'll be happening all at the same time, judges, all of that. We also want to highlight that up to this point, academic year-wise, we have given out about $30,000 to those students that want to attend conferences and don't have the opportunity otherwise. So, we're able to fund them as well as giving out license fees for those looking for tho, those types of aspects, and able to collaborate with other organizations on campus as well. GSA also wants to take a moment to acknowledge a statement that was placed out for campus and the community two days ago on Tuesday. We would like to highlight that our mission statement as GSA is to connect, support, and navigate graduate students on all levels. GSA will continue to work with Western Michigan University as we navigate all of these changes and times that no one really foreseen coming or happening. The Graduate Student Association also wants to take a moment to reaffirm our unwavering commitment to safety, well-being, and success here at Western Michigan University. It's a time when national conversations may shift and policies are implemented with no control, but please know that regardless of the current presidential administration or any outside influence, your rights, your voice, and your experience are valued here at Western. At Western Michigan University, we are dedicating to fostering a campus of community built on inclusivity, respect, and support for all students. Our mission is to ensure that every student, no matter what their background, identity, or viewpoint, feels empowered and supported. We will continue to work closely with the administration here to further assist in navigating the changes that happen on our campus. An attack to one graduate student is an attack to all graduate students. Thank you so much, and onward for the brown and gold, as always.
Onward for the brown and gold, indeed. I just want to say our shared governance, starting with Dr. Nagle and Alex and Jocelyn, it's, it's my honor to work with all of you and on behalf of Chair Edgerton and, and our Board. We learn a lot from each of you. Your voice is very important to us, and thank you. Thank you for the accomplishments, accomplishments that you shared with us today. We're proud of you, and we're proud of our Western team. Next, President Montgomery will present the Fall 2024 Employee Graduates, and immediately following the recognition, President Montgomery will introduce our featured presentation for today, Climb Onward, a look into WMU Athletics Strategic Plan with Dan Bartholomew, WMU's Vice President for Intercollegiate Athletics. Take it away, President Montgomery.
Thank you, Chair Turfee. Today, we're going to celebrate 14 different WMU employees who earned their who earned their degrees this December. Their commitment to advancing their education while contributing to the campus as full-time employees is a testament to their perseverance and the belief in the power of a Western education. We really do appreciate their dedication, not only in their roles at WMU, but in their professional and personal growth and their appreciation for lifelong learning. We're incredibly proud of each of them and commend them in their determination to reach these milestones. If any of them are in the audience, as I call your name, please stand so that we may recognize you. Dr. Joan Roan, Samantha Davis, Dr. Vanessa Hills, Mo Brooks, Christina Furman, Jan O. Ward, Dr. Sarah Clark, Aneska Viskova Robertson, doctor, Dr. Kelly Pierce, Chenkid Sun, Alex Spratt, Daniel Baker, Melissa Dillon, and Rachel Tern. I want to say thank you and congratulations to all of them, and appreciate all your hard work, and really respects for what you've gone through and what you've earned. So how about a round of applause for all of you. So the next item on our agenda is a special presentation from Intercollegiate Athletics. We're incredibly proud of our student athletes. I don't want to steal or thunder, but they've been setting records on the court, on the field, in the classroom, and in the community. And it's a real testament to them as individuals and to the incredible team of coaches and staff and their leadership of the Athletic Director in putting together a great program that gives them a first-class experiences and allows each of them to attain and live up to their potential. And the leader of that effort is our Athletic Director, Dan Bartholomew, and so I invite him up to the, to tell us a little bit more about this historic semester and the work, and congratulate you, Dan, for an incredible job done.
Well, thank you. Good afternoon, Broncos. All right, let's have some fun. Well, thank you, Board. Thank you, President Montgomery, for that introduction. Thrilled to be back up here in front of you today, talking about something that I'm very passionate about, which is our intercollegiate athletics program, our student athletes, and the student athlete experience. You'll remember about just over two and a half years ago, we set out to put together a strategic plan and vision for our athletic department, and that process included input from our staff and coaches and students, of course, our non-student athletes, our community members, our faculty and university staff. A very collaborative process that we're proud of and that we continue to use as a guiding light to this day. Two years ago, I stood in front of you to share that plan. And while we still have a lot of work to do, a lot of goals that are not yet complete, I did want to do a check-in just over two years into that plan to update you on how that's going. So I always like to lead any conversation on our strategic plan on what our vision statement was, and again, a vision statement that was created by a multitude of stakeholders who contributed to our plan. But our plan and our vision centers on comprehensive excellence. We can be great at everything at Western Michigan, and we wanted to define that. And we define that by saying that every student athlete that commits to us, that makes a commitment to Western, will graduate holistically prepared to pursue their passions in life, will make a high-quality connection with a community that will last beyond their eligibility, and will win a conference championship. Our plan and everything that went into that plan serves to fulfill that vision. That vision turned into six priorities, and I love this diagram here. Six priorities, at the center of those six priorities are three: the holistic development of our student athletes, creating a welcoming and inclusive environment for all of our stakeholders in all of our venues, competitive success and a championship culture. And then those central priorities are fed by outlying priorities in the area of facilities, revenue generation, and community. Those priorities became six strategic goals. Those six strategic goals became strategies and objectives that are all quantifiable and measurable. I will not bore you with them in this particular presentation, but just know it is not an abstract plan. We have very quantifiable measures that support these priorities, and we continue to track those. But at a high level, right, let's start with that, that first statement, the holistic development of our student athletes, and that first word in that statement, which is graduation. And of course, that starts with academics. And very proud that since the start of our plan, our student athletes have broken five GPA records, most recently this past spring with a 3.43 cumulative GPA for the term, and also a record for the academic year in '03-'04, a 3.40 cumulative GPA. Fantastic work by them. This past fall, they set their second highest GPA mark at 3.38, but, but even more impressive than that, a school record 96 4.0 GPA student athletes. And so what that means is, if you come down to University Arena, and please do, come visit us anytime, one out of every four student athletes that you bump into got a 4.0 GPA in the fall. That is ridiculous. Toodles to them. There's a couple in the audience today. When you think about graduation and you think about the priorities of the university, retention is a big part of that, right? And so we're also proud, throughout the course of the plan, we have swept the MAC Faculty Athletic Representative Awards, and those awards are quantified by not only academic success in GPA, but also retention and graduation. So those programs in the MAC that are retaining and graduating their athletes at the highest level, and also at the highest academic level. So when you think about it, at a time in Division I where it is really easy to pack your bags and leave, Western Michigan is leading our conference in retaining and graduating our student athletes at the highest academic level. Holistic development goes beyond just the classroom for us, however, and in our strategic plan, one of our goals was to start the first standalone Life Skills and Student Athlete Development Program in the MAC. And we have done that, led by Julian Jones, who's here with us today. That program serves all of our student athletes, led by our staff within our buildings. We have set up a four-year curriculum on career development that follows our student athletes through their journey, a four-year curriculum on financial and brand management, new holistic wellness initiatives, expanded access to mental health and nutrition services, leadership development that includes a mentoring program with our alums in leadership academies based on your class here at Western. And then what I would also call a culture of community, incentivizing and encouraging attendance at your peers' events, advocacy groups and programming related to those inclusion efforts that we talked about. I'm very proud of what Broncos Empowered Our Life Skills Program is doing. I do want to obviously give a shout-out to Julian, but also my colleagues on the Cabinet and the Provost's Office, and Dr. Candy McCorkle for their great efforts in supporting this program. That second line in the statement, community, right? High-quality access to the community. It starts with service and prioritizing service. Also proud to say that throughout the plan, for the last two years running, we have broken the community service hours record for student athletes here at Western Michigan. We did over 6,500 hours of community service last year. We are on pace to break that this year. And actually, one of the objectives within the plan was to finish in the top 25 in community service impact in Division I. They actually measure that, which is kind of cool, so we compete and have fun with it. Every year since the plan, we have finished in the top 15. We are currently 14th in the country in community service impact, and last year, our women's golf program was named the national champion in community service impact. Also, part of the community is, is obviously getting folks onto our campus, increasing attendance, but also engaging our students and making the experience fun in our venues. And so proud to say, through, through the course of the plan here, we've seen attendance increases of at least 18% in all of our sports since the start of the plan. That included in, last football season, national recognition, being first in the MAC in year-over-year attendance increase, and 13th in the country, and then following up that up with our home opener this year, our largest-attended home opener since 2017, and that was the home opener after the Cotton Bowl. It's not just football. We've seen attendance increases in all of our sports, as noted. Some eye-opening stats, 29% in hockey, 75% in volleyball. The other things that we've done is, is really made an effort to make a strategic connection with our students. WSA has been a great partner in that. We have also established the Lawson Lunatics as a registered student organization. And so what we've seen, which is fun, get a little guidance from us, we've seen two record-breaking student crowds in hockey of over 2,000 students. We had almost 5,000 students at our football opener this year, and as part of that year-over-year increase from last season, we had an increase in student attendance of 52%. We do need to generate revenues for this plan. Obviously, as, as expenses and aspirations increase, we have to seek external support to support those initiatives, and so we continue to prioritize revenue generation as a key priority in that plan. In traditional revenue, we've seen increases in tickets, at least 10% increase in all sports. That includes a 41% increase in hockey, a 40% increase in women's basketball, and a 90% increase in volleyball. We've seen increases in giving, thanks to the efforts of, of university advancement and my colleagues on the Cabinet, Kristen DeVries, and Jim Colheane, and Gina Gonzalez on our staff. 72% increase in unique donors. This year, only halfway through the fiscal year, we are, have already doubled our annual giving number from when we started the plan, and that is supported by three, the, the three largest gifts to women's sports in our history, and also this past fall, the largest named gift in our history from David and Rhonda Stafford. We're also seeking new and non-traditional revenue streams. That's important to us. Those include items like the first athletically-controlled online merchandising outlet in Rally House. Also gives our, our student athletes an opportunity to generate some revenues through their own personalized merchandise, obviously the onset of alcohol sales in our venues, and then a, a unique partnership with a third-party multimedia rights provider who takes on our sponsorship, which has led to a net sponsorship increase of 33%. And so many thanks to Van Wagner for their partnership there. Facilities, obviously, was mentioned as a key priority. We have completed several facility updates in the last couple years, all privately funded. A few that I would point out, a renovated and state-of-the-art locker room for our women's basketball program, what I think is the finest indoor golf performance center in our league for our women's golf program, new locker rooms and gymnastics, women's track and men's tennis, and four nutrition fueling stations across all of our buildings, among other projects. Of course, I cannot talk about facility upgrades without mentioning that we are nearing completion on design of the finest training and development facility for hockey and men's and women's basketball in the country, professional or college, and attached to that, an intimate and modernized arena that will also lead the country in fan and student experience, and we're very excited about that partnership. Back to the center, winning was a part of it. I said that two and a half years ago. We're not going to be shy about talking about why winning is important. And so at the end of last year, we were very proud to announce that we won 13 conference championships. And I mentioned that winning a conference championship is one of those goals. Of those 13, eight were team, five were individual. That eight-team championships was a record here at Western Michigan, also a record, also a priority measured in our strategic plan. We wanted to be competitive in what's called the Learfield Directors Cup. The Learfield Directors Cup manages access to postseason and postseason performance across all of your sports within your primary conference, right? And so to me, it is the single most important indicator of competitive success. We finished, for the first time in our history, first in the MAC in the Directors Cup, and followed it up this fall, because last year's successes are next year's expectations, followed it up this fall with all five of our fall team programs appearing in the NCAA postseason, as well as an individual postseason appearance from our men's tennis program. As it relates to those five fall team performances, it is the first time in the history of the MAC and Western Michigan that we've had five, all five fall sports appear in the postseason and have an all-MAC and NCAA All-Region cross-country performer. To give you some perspective on that, the only other programs in Division I that could boast that this year were the University of North Carolina and the University of Washington. So, in closing, before I turn it over to our student athletes, who you really want to hear from, one interesting little tidbit from our plan. When we first started the strategic plan, we quantified everything. You know, we had charts, we had metrics, we sort of knew, we called it confronting reality, and we knew where we were and everything that was important in terms of what we measured. But sometimes, the most simple charts are the ones that stand out the most. And this is one that I shared at our first all-staff meeting, and that we've sort of utilized as a motivating factor in achieving the goals in our plan. And this was our average conference finish across all of our sports, okay? Our average conference finish measured over the 10 years before we started our plan. And as you can see here, we were in a pretty steady decline, down to, to worse than seventh in our league. So, so towards the bottom of our leagues, average conference finish across all of our sports. And, and we all agreed, as part of this plan, that that was something we were going to turn. And we knew it would take some time, and we actually had some fun with it, and we called it "The Climb." So you'll see a lot of hashtag "The Climes" and "The Climb" graphics in our facilities. But our goal was to turn that thing. And two years later, very proud to, to show that not only have we turned it, but we've got our highest average conference ranking in, in the past 10 years here, this past academic year, and obviously with what's happening in the fall, very encouraged about what's happening next. So, thank you. We are not done. That's why we say "Climb Onward" now. We are not done. As many of you know, Division I is a very volatile and fluid environment right now, and there are many areas of our department that have not caught up to the successes that I've shared with you today. So, so the work continues. Regardless of what happens in our world, and there's a lot happening in our world, student athlete experience remains number one, okay? That remains at the center of the plan. That remains the key priority as we build here moving forward. And so I thought, who better to hear from about their experiences than our student athletes? So for some brief remarks, I brought two of our finest student athletes to the Board meeting today, two very different perspectives and experiences. And the first student athlete who's going to talk to you today is Christian Shannon. Christian just finished his freshman year of eligibility on our men's soccer program, who went to their third straight NCAA tournament and had a 37-game unbeaten streak. Christian was an Academic All-American this past year as a freshman. Christian was also named to the top drawer, top 11 freshman team, which means he was the top freshman in his position in Division I. He's also a member of our Emerging Leadership Academy and our mentorship program, and is doing great things at Western. Our second student athlete who's going to speak to you, very different, Logan Case, who is a departing senior grad, already a graduate on our volleyball program. Logan has been an Academic All-American. Logan has been an All-American. She's been the setter of the year in MAC. She was among the heart and soul of the team that just won back-to-back MAC championships and went to the NCAA tournament two years in a row for the first time since 1989, and also served as an officer on our Student Athlete Advisory Committee, which is our senior leadership group, who serves as a voice to our administration within athletics. So, Christian, we'll start with you. Come on up.
Hello, everyone. My name is Christian. Before I begin, I just want to say thank you guys for all that you do, and especially the Board for all you do for Western Athletics here. A little bit about myself, when I first got here, there was a lot of things that made me want to choose Western, and I really think that was the academic staff and athletic staff we have here, which athletically, I want to be partnering with coaches that really believed in my abilities as a player and, and value me not only as an athlete, but, but as a person as well, and which that's really made it easy for me to become a Bronco. So last year, it was my first year here. The coaches actually told me they were going to redshirt me, which was very hard for me mentally, hard to process that, coming from the youth level, where I play every game, start every game, score goals, and even was the captain of my high school and club team. So it was really hard to not be able to help my teammates out on the soccer field. But my coaches still really believed in my potential and really helped me improve and, and get better for the next season, which I was very fortunate enough to start in all 20 games and play basically every single minute. And I also earned some awards on the way, such as being named Academic All-American and being the 13th-ranked player in the country, which was pretty amazing for me, something I didn't think I would ever happen, but it was sweet. So yeah, in terms of goals, I'm just trying to keep moving forward athletically, staying on top as being the top player, and also maintaining my 4.0 GPA and keep improving that, which I really have to appreciate the academic advisors we have here. They really helped me relieve my stress a lot and, and find my courses and helped me out a lot there. They really helped me relieve my stress a lot and find my courses and helped me out a lot there. And also, people should take advantage of the programs like Broncos Empowered, which I'm really happy to be part of their leadership program here. I naturally lead more by example than communicating, so they really helped me a lot there in that space. One of my favorite sessions that we actually did, we talked about our core values. And I think one of my main core values that represents myself is discipline. I think if you would ask me last year what kept me going, I think it was the discipline and keep going. Even though I'm not playing, I'm still working hard to improve and get better every single day. So I think that's what really represents me and to be so successful as I was this past season. So I hope to carry that on in these next couple of years. So yeah, thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me today. It's really great to be here. My name is Logan Case, and I'm a recent Western Michigan volleyball alum and graduate of Western Michigan University. I believe I spoke at this one or two years ago, and I can't find what I wrote to say and need some inspiration. But I can imagine I wrote something along the lines of hoping to bring a championship to Western in my time and expressing my gratitude for this great place. I am thrilled to report, as Dan said, that we did, in fact, win the last two years. And there is no doubt that, in my mind, that these successes will continue under Dan for Western. Also, my gratitude for this place has skyrocketed and will remain unwavering as I take on the alum title. What Dan presents today on behalf of the amazing athletic department and its staff are not just a bunch of filler words in a very neat and thick packet he's got in his office if you want it in paper form. I know we like paper form. It's very, very nice. Or a PowerPoint. It's very real. As captain of our volleyball team over my years here, I have typically been the one to speak on behalf of the group. And when Dan asked me to join him again today, I honestly thought about winging my speech. Didn't for two reasons. I talk a lot, and you know, I just thought I'd get nervous, so I thought I'd test something written down. Not because I'm sick of writing speeches. I love writing speeches about my amazing group and the opportunity I've had here that started in 2020, obviously. But because of how easy it is to brag about what we have here in Bronco Athletics and how real and rewarding it has been. Grabbing Dan was the best thing Western could have possibly done, and I hope you believe me when I say that the Broncos are heading on a path of exponential growth and greatness in the coming years. When he speaks about the vision that he has for our department, I truly hope you believe and invest in it. When he talks about how we've got the best coaches, support staff, and athletes, I hope you believe and invest in them. When he asks for money, I hope, no, I'm kidding. Perhaps you're thinking, well, of course, Dan's going to bring someone up here who's going to say he's great, the strategic plan is flawless, but really, he can't hurt me. I'm graduated. I have no reason to lie to you. He also can't pay me under the table. I'm not eligible anymore. So this is purely from the heart, and on a serious note, in a few months, I will walk away from Western for the first time in a way I really haven't before. My direct affiliation has sadly run its course, and as a student athlete here, and I'm so sad about it. My time here was incredible, and though hard in the beginning through COVID, that was my freshman year, I wouldn't trade it for the world. I only wish I could be here in this next era, as I believe it's going to be the best yet. I'm not sure who or how many of you have interest in our athletics specifically or college sports in general, but it's really taken a turn recently and will continue to do so. And it's hard to say if it's negative, positive, or a little bit of both with NIL, transfer portals, and other monetization opportunities. The dynamics have changed, but the vision from Western's side of things has not. I know the greater athletics world calls Western a mid-major school, but let me tell you just how major we are and are going to be. In the world of constant change in college athletics, Western is keeping up with every major-name school you can think of, competitively and in general, on so many levels. We're exploring name, image, and likeness. We're building facilities. We're getting top-notch equipment. It's a huge deal, and there is nothing more I love to see and be a part of than being the underdog, or at least letting outsiders think we are. I hope you can understand how huge it is that a fifth-year graduate senior, who went through COVID and did what a lot of ex-athletes consider the hardest and most demanding years of their young life athletically, can stand up here after the last whistle is blown and the grad cap's been thrown in the air, and all said and done that I wish I could do it again. That's huge. That does not speak to my tenacity or how I love to do difficult things, because let me tell you, I am tired. I am tired. It speaks to the community and the home that I have found here within the people at the university. There's nothing I love more than sporting my big brown parka that everyone knows belongs to the athletes of this school. It fills me with such pride. Even when I'm a washed-up retired Bronco walking through Meyer in my parka, I still feel that. Strut in my stuff, no one else cares, but I do. It is a surreal and almost unsettling feeling to be done here, and I don't know when it's really going to sink in with me, because it hasn't yet, but how fortunate am I to have been a part of something that is so hard to say goodbye to? How fortunate am I to have represented the Brown and Gold for five years? Got that extra year. Thank you, COVID. How fortunate I am that I'll actually really miss the dining hall food. Not everyone can say that. I really love this place. And how fortunate we all are to bear witness to everything that the Broncos have in store in the coming years. Thank you so much, and go Broncos.
In case you're wondering, Logan is a graduate. You cannot hire her, because we're going to. Whenever she finishes taking on the world, and thank you, Christian, for those great remarks. You have to come back up here, because we are closing our presentation and happy to answer any questions. Hearing none?
Everybody's got to have a favorite moment. I'll ask each of the students.
I think probably my favorite moment was, actually, my first game, I scored on my debut, so that was pretty amazing for me.
I'm more of an assister, so I don't really score that much, no. But I think my favorite moment was when we, because we won the regular season last year, we got to host the conference championship, which so much work went into that. We were really hyping it up. We had a huge crowd. It was the biggest I'd ever played in front of, which has potential to be. I know, like, back in, I think, the 80s during that team, like, they had huge crowds all the time. And I know that for all of our sports and their rise, that can keep happening. So when our, I think, one of my teammate's dads went to the football team, who actually got to come to the game because they were playing, and I think Bowling Greens team also came for the football team, because they were both there, and that's who we played against. I also lost them my freshman year, and it was just such a huge crowd. And we, he got them all up cheering, and they were chanting, and I couldn't even hear myself think. The floor was, like, shaking. It was just, like, kind of a surreal moment and just one of those you won't really forget as an athlete. So winning in front of that crowd was unbelievable, so.
Christian, how did you hurt your leg, and what's the prognosis for recovery?
I actually hurt it yesterday, unfortunately, but I sprained a bunch of ligaments, so I should be back in a month or so. So yeah, hopefully be back soon.
I do just want to quickly recognize our exec team who's here. My exec team could just stand up, because they're actually the ones who get all of this done. Thank you, y'all, everybody. Appreciate it. And thank you for the time.
Thank you for those presentations, President Montgomery and Vice President Bothamme. Dr. Schuman, are there any public comments or requests regarding action items?
Vice Chair Turfey, we have six for the general public comments at the end, but none involving action items.
Great. Next, we'll consider moving forward. Dr. Schuman, can you please lead our Board of Trustees in the annual election of officers?
Be happy to do so. This is exciting. This is the slate of officers for leadership and the support of the Board for 2025. So I present to you, and repeating what Vice Chair Turfey mentioned earlier, the slate of officers with Chair Shelley Edgerton, Vice Chair Alan Turfey, Secretary Kayla Schuman, Treasurer and Assistant Jan Vander Clay, and Assistant Treasurer Colleen Scarf. So the recommended action is, it's recommended that the Western Michigan University Board of Trustees elect the proposed officers for 2025.
Thank you, Dr. Schuman.
Some moved.
Support.
I believe this is a roll call vote, Dr. Schuman.
It is, sir. Okay, to start the vote, Chair Edgerton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Turfey?
Yes.
Trustee Burris?
Yes.
Trustee Chen Zhang?
Yes.
Trustee Holdley?
Yes.
Trustee Liggins?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Wood?
Yes.
Vice Chair Turfey, motion passes.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Dr. Schuman, will you please lead us through delegated Board of Trustees authority to confer WMU degrees for 2025?
Be happy to do so. This is one of those logistical housekeeping components for the annual meeting. So the Board of Trustees has the overall responsibility for the governance of the university and retains the ultimate oversight for all university matters and constitutional authority for conferring degrees and granting diplomas. The Board reserves the right to delegate this authority. So the recommended action is, the Western Michigan University Board of Trustees authorizes the president of the university to confer degrees on their behalf in the 2025 commencement ceremonies as recommended by the faculty.
Thank you, Dr. Schuman. Entertain a motion from the Board?
Some moved.
Support.
This is also a roll call vote.
It is. Chair Edgerton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Turfey?
Yes.
Trustee Burris?
Yes.
Trustee Chen Zhang?
Yes.
Trustee Holdley?
Yes.
Trustee Liggins?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Wood? Vice Chair Turfey, motion passes.
Thank you. I will now ask President Montgomery to share a report on the Faculty Senate's Constitutional Amendments.
I want to first just congratulate all the officers on their election and look forward to working with you, continuing to work with you, helping make sure that we provide a first-quality, holistic, experience-driven education to our Broncos, and that we continue to elevate this university to even greater heights. Onto the Faculty Senate Constitutional Amendments. The Faculty Senate in 2024, they had a restructuring committee who recently proposed a number of constitutional amendments, which now come before the Board of Trustees for consideration. The amendments, which fall under the purview of the Board, were developed based on extensive discussions and alignment with the following goals, among them being to clarify the Senate's purpose and authority to align policies with the updated American Institute of Parliamentarian Standard Code of Parliamentary Procedure. That's a mouthful. To ensure structural consistency with articles and bylaws, to enhance government and to eliminate, governance, rather, and to eliminate redundancies in their bylaws. The Faculty Senate leadership requested the Board consideration of the proposed amendments. Which concludes my remarks.
Thank you, President Montgomery. I will entertain a motion from the Board? Some moved.
Support.
Thank you. This is a roll call vote as well.
Chair Edgerton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Turfey?
Yes.
Trustee Burris?
Yes.
Trustee Chen Zhang?
Yes.
Trustee Holdley?
Yes.
Trustee Liggins?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Wood? Vice Chair Turfey, motion passes.
Thank you, Dr. Schuman. We will now hear from Vice President Vander Clay, here to discuss the Campus Master Plan for 2025 and beyond. The mic is yours.
Thank you. So I want to start by echoing our president's gratitude for those who participated. And as I look out, I see members who were on our advisory committee, and I see members who are on one of our 10 user groups. There were hundreds of faculty, staff, students, and community members who participated. This plan is the result of their vision and commitment and participation with the leadership and the help of facilities management. And three of those people who are active are here today as well. It's been almost a year-long effort. Our last master plan was done not quite 25 years ago. It had a couple refreshes, but if you think back to the last 25 years, you know how much has really changed. And I think that's important for us to remember about a master plan for campus. Needs change. So this is not a rigid blueprint. So if you see something in the plan, that does not mean it immediately happens, or that may happen in that way. It truly is a guiding vision based on what our needs are, what our core values are, and how it will enhance our strategic plan, as well as make useful, good decisions with our limited resources. So what is our physical campus? You know, you might think that's pretty obvious, but it's above ground and it's below ground. And it's actually above buildings. We look at our buildings, we look at parking, transportation, we look at sustainability, we look at utility tunnels. It is really trying to make a vibrant campus that meets the needs of all of our community members. And to be successful, as our needs change, and they will, we will need to periodically come back and go through this effort again, probably about every five years. So again, thank you all for making sure that we reached this goal, because it was quite the climb. I don't want to echo Dan's words, but we too climbed. So with that, I recommend to the Board of Trustees that they approve the Campus Master Plan, known as 2025 and beyond. Happy to answer questions.
Any questions? Dr. Schuman, I will entertain a motion from the Board?
Support.
Roll call vote, please.
Chair Edgerton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Turfey?
Yes.
Trustee Burris?
Yes.
Trustee Chen Zhang?
Yes.
Trustee Holdley?
Yes.
Trustee Liggins?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Wood? Vice Chair Turfey, motion passes.
Thank you. Once again, I will ask Vice President Vander Clay to take the mic and share information for the Board to consider the 2025 Revenue Bonds.
Thank you. So this next action actually supports some of the vision and the master plan that we just approved. The resolution was actually prepared by our University Bond Council, Miller Canfield. And as requests to borrow funds at tax-exempt basis, they're known as general revenue bonds. And the new money would be about $85 million, and it's for the new Valley residents. Many of us have seen the construction that has begun there. And the new residence and meeting the needs of our freshman students have been a critical need for some time. With that, too, we're also looking, if market conditions are favorable, to do refunding of some existing debt. We have two borrowings. One was done in 2014, one was done in 2015. And if the rates are favorable enough in the market, we will issue new debt to extinguish the old debt, because it's a lower financing cost. We're looking between those two bond issues at about $83 million, but we'll not know until we actually go to market, which we hope to do in the next couple of months. So with that, we're asking approval that both the president and vice president for Business and Finance are authorized to negotiate, execute, and deliver on behalf of the Board the borrowing as recommended by Bond Council. And we seek your support for that recommendation.
Thank you. Are there any questions? I will entertain a motion from the Board? Support. Roll call vote, please, Dr. Schuman.
Chair Edgerton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Turfey?
Yes.
Trustee Burris?
Yes.
Trustee Chen Zhang?
Yes.
Trustee Holdley?
Yes.
Trustee Liggins?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Wood? Vice Chair Turfey, motion passes.
Thank you. I want to recognize Jan Vander Clay and David Dyken. As the Board was going through some of the materials last night, we had a couple of questions and talked about running the two-minute drill. We let them know that we'd appreciate if we could talk to them this morning, and both Jan and David did, and we're eternally grateful. Thank you both for your service. We appreciate it. The final item for today is the consent agenda. We are considering the items mentioned earlier today. Would anyone like to remove any for further discussion? I will entertain a motion from the Board? Thank you. Dr. Schuman, a roll call vote, please.
Chair Edgerton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Turfey?
Yes.
Trustee Burris?
Yes.
Trustee Chen Zhang?
Yes.
Trustee Holdley?
Yes.
Trustee Liggins?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Wood? Vice Chair Turfey, consent items pass.
Thank you, Dr. Schuman. Are there any general public comments?
We do. We have six. If I could call first Olivia, please.
Hi. Didn't want to go first, but here I am. I want to use my time to discuss the statement from the President's Cabinet the other day regarding the executive orders. And I want to start by reading part of a statement from the President's Cabinet in 2017 that was following the white supremacist rally that happened in Virginia at that time. It says, quote, "Such events challenge us as individuals and as institutions to make clear our moral values, to take a stand on the side of human decency, and to speak out with one loud voice for the kind of society we believe in. As the new president of this fine university, I am proud to reaffirm our longstanding commitment to diversity and inclusion, to our fundamental belief in the dignity and worth of all human beings, no matter their race, ethnicity, gender, national origin, religion, or sexual orientation. It is our differences that..." It is our differences that make us stronger. Efforts to threaten, demean, or degrade one of us is an assault against our whole community and should not go unchallenged by an inclusive and welcoming campus." The statement that was released on Tuesday regarding the executive orders was really lacking in the specificity and this energy. I understand that you need to carefully craft the statement so you don't upset people and whatever, and I understand that this university needs money to function, but I'm really sick and tired of people in positions of influence being too scared to stand up when your students' rights are actively being threatened. President Montgomery, you said it yourself, the efforts from the Trump administration should not go unchallenged by an inclusive and welcoming campus. You all owe it to your students to stand up with them against the egregious attempts from the White House to strip away their rights. I want to echo the wonderful statement made by WSA President Alex Kasperzick, and I want to strongly urge you to listen to what your students, staff, and faculty are saying, and as you said in 2017, speak out with one loud voice for the kind of society that we believe in. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Olivia, thank you. Next, Don.
I'd rather not be here today, but I have to be here. I have to be here just like Rabbi Joshua Heschel had to speak out against the war in Vietnam. He said, "I'm tired of speaking out, but every time I open my prayer book, I see the faces of napalm children." I'm speaking out today because every time I open a book to study, I see the faces of the children who have been slaughtered in Gaza. I see their mothers and the agony that is on their faces. I see the torment of the people that lay on the floor of the bombed-out hospitals. And I have to speak out. The question is, are the Palestinians people? If they're people, they deserve human rights, they deserve respect, they deserve self-determination. But what has happened is that our country, our bombs have been dropped and caused all the terror that those people experience. This has been done in our name, and it is up to us to speak out against it. We do not want to be a part of that. And you can take a stand against that. You can make sure that none of our investments are invested in companies that provide weapons for Israel. You can speak out against the dehumanization of the Palestinians. This is a terrible time in this country. Families are being broken up, efforts to try to do something about the discrimination that people in our society face are being wiped away. People are afraid. People who have the microphone, that have the opportunity, have to speak out. We have to speak out for justice and human rights, and a good place to start is with the Palestinians. So we're asking you once again, take our investments out of any company that is providing for those bombs. Speak out and say, "Not in our name." We believe in justice, we believe in human rights, we believe that the Palestinians deserve respect and everything that they could get to seize all that they deserve as human people.
Don, thank you. Next, Avery. Avery here? Okay, I don't see Avery. Marissa?
My name's Marissa Wagner. I'm a senior here in the Computer Science Program and the president of Students for Justice in Palestine. I'm here today to address the lack of concrete action in protecting our international students and faculty in the wake of recent executive orders. To emphasize Western's moral obligation, please allow me to outline some statistics I've come across. From the 2017 spring semester to the 2024 spring semester, WMU experienced a staggering 25% decline in undergraduate student enrollment, while international undergraduate enrollment grew by 28%. International enrollment from January 2024 to January 2025 surged by 20%, with a 32% increase in international undergraduates. The total number of students enrolled also rose by 4% this past year, but 3% of that was solely from international enrollment. It is evident that international students make up one of the fastest-growing segments of our enrollment, and this administration has a responsibility to implement meaningful protections in response to the recent executive orders targeting student activists with threats of visa cancellations and deportation. While the president's cabinet sent out a generic statement to the WMU community earlier this week, the statement failed to outline a single tangible action to protect students, faculty, and staff from these dangerous and xenophobic policies. As an institution that actively recruits international students, benefits from their full out-of-state tuition payments, and increasingly relies on them to offset declining enrollment, the least this administration can do is stand up for their safety and future. The legal, financial, and personal safety risks posed by these executive orders demand more effort than a vague promise to monitor the situation. Therefore, I'm urging this administration to, one, establish a legal support network to assist international students facing threats to their visa status; two, commit to noncompliance with politically motivated ICE investigations, with refusal to act as an informant on student activism; three, develop a raid response plan to support affected students and provide guidance on their legal rights; and four, reassure our international students and faculty that they are safe and welcome in this community. We are living in unprecedented times, and now is not the time for neutrality or hesitation. This administration has a critical choice to make. Will it act to protect the students that keep this university afloat, or will it continue to look away and allow them to be targeted? Thank you.
Thank you, Marissa. Next, Aya.
My name is Aya Zaheridin. I'm the president of Society of Women Engineers, and with the new executive orders that Trump has placed, on Monday when we had our general meeting, we learned that Title IX has been changed, and it's very disturbing to see what it has become. And as a woman in a very heavily dominated men field, this is very, very unsafe for us and crucial to have at least something that we know that we can lie back on as protection. As a woman in engineering, I have to work twice as hard usually to get recognition from my peers and like, listen to me. So having Title IX as our backup was always good, but having it now changed into having a court system, and you can cross-examine each other, is very disturbing, as well as not having protection outside of campus. If anything happens outside of campus, like in a conference or anything, we do not get any, we can't apply for Title IX, and that is very severe and very dangerous, and that comes to every, and it also doesn't protect our LGBTQ peers. Society of Women Engineers, we feel we have a role and a duty to speak up about it. We're the only woman engineering club in Western Michigan University, and we also are the only club that has like minor people also with us, so we need to protect everyone. LGBTQ rights are also important for us, and we cannot have no protection and have Title IX really changed. So we, I, we really urge you, and as the president of Society of Women Engineers, we really, really ask you to not adopt Title IX fully, or at least talk, look into it and not adopt it fully. And one of the solutions that we were able to look at is you can ask for an exemption from the U.S. Department of Education, especially the Office of Civil Rights, because Title IX is very crucial, and it's not just crucial for us in engineering, it's crucial for every single person to feel protected on campus and feel that they have a spot to go to and talk about what's going on. So I really urge you to look into it and take into consideration Title IX, because it's very important and crucial, not just for us in engineering, not just for us in STEM, for every single person, especially women, because in these fields, we are very much minority, and we need to keep each other protected and safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Aya. Last speaker for today is Jacinda.
My name is Jacinda Swanson. For most of my 21 years as faculty in the Department of Political Science, I taught Dr. Martin Luther King's Letter from Birmingham City Jail, or his anti-war Poor People's Movement. Every year, Western makes a big deal about Martin Luther King Day, yet Western appears intent on betraying some of the core principles guiding his work. MLK said that, "One has a moral responsibility to disobey unjust laws." Trump's executive orders targeting undocumented residents are deeply unjust, threatening to round up our family members, friends, students, coworkers, and deport them solely because of where they were born. Higher Ed statistics estimate that 1% of Michigan college students are undocumented, which would mean that roughly 200 Western students might be ripped from our campus. Thousands more of us have undocumented family, friends, and neighbors who are living in terror. But what is Western doing to educate staff, faculty, and students about our rights, to protect those who might be harassed by ICE, to support families that might be torn apart? The email sent out Tuesday by the president's cabinet did not answer these questions, nor did it address whether Western staff have been instructed to assist or not to assist if ICE wants us to track down students on campus, or whether Western cops will help ICE with detentions, or whether Western cops would arrest students, faculty, or staff seeking to protect students targeted by ICE. Will Western quickly notify us if ICE is on campus? Police have already confirmed the presence of ICE agents in downtown Ann Arbor. MLK's life work was grounded in nonviolent protest, but yesterday's email did not explain what Western is going to do to protect and support international students who peacefully protest on campus against injustices like those faced by the Palestinians. Trump's executive order targeted our international, targeting our international students who contribute so much to Western is clearly immoral and contrary to higher education's commitment to critical thinking and democratic citizenship. MLK was also a vocal critic of war and militarism, yet Western continues to invest in companies facilitating Israel's ongoing war crimes in Gaza, the West Bank, Lebanon, and Syria. Despite the provisional ceasefire in Gaza, UNRWA reports that Israel is invading the West Bank, at least 16 people have already died, including a two-year-old child. There is extensive displacement, they're using airstrikes and armored bulldozers. As Western did in 1983 with regard to apartheid South Africa, Western must divest from all companies doing business in Israel.
Thank you, Jacinda. Vice Chair Turfee, that concludes general public comment. Thank you all for your comments today. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for your participation today. Have a great day.